Good evening, welcome to the Wakefield Town Council, May 31st, 2018. We first have public participation, but I know we're missing Ed Dombrowski, I'm sure he's got caught up in traffic, so I'd like to delay that a little bit, I know there's three folks scheduled to speak tonight, so if you can bear with me a little bit, I just want to make sure everyone's here. So if we can move on to approval of minutes from the regular board minutes of May 14th, 2018, if I can get a motion to approve, second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so it's unanimous. And second, we have executive minutes from May 14th, 2018, if I can get a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
And no opposed? Okay, so three, here's the license permits and contracts. First, we have Sarah, is it Jen? Sorry, Jen? Jargine, one day local license for June 2nd, 2018 at the Maricalla Civic Center. Could I have a motion for the license permit contract?
I move that you accept the local license for June 2nd?
Okay. Second? Okay. And discussion on this?
Just curious, what is the purpose of the local license? I didn't see anything on the...
Good question.
She's having a party.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Part of the party.
Okay.
On that, I was, and most of them are innocuous as this.
Yeah.
Can we add a line for the purpose of the event?
Yes, good, it's a good idea.
On the form?
Yeah.
Because we always ask the question?
Yeah.
So they have to fill it out?
Sure.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Great, great question.
I'm the voter.
So, since we know it's a party, and we'll find out in the future earlier, we have a motion with a second, all in favor, to approve the one day local license for June 2nd, 2018 at the Maricalla Civic Center?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, seeing that, we'll move on to, yeah, we'll just move down to four. Okay, so for appointments on number four, careful consideration on the town council liaison appointments through May 31st, 2019. I had a little variance that I wanted to see if we could do this year. Paul's idea was great last year, I appreciate Paul's comments, and I really wanted to make sure that we had a few more thoughts when something important is going on, whether it's the budget, or a new safety building, something like that, so the liaison for that particular department will be able to come back to the town council and discuss it, give us an update. So, I welcome feedback on that, if you hate the idea, but I think the main thing is just to have a little more feedback, nothing really different than Paul's, just a little more of an update, maybe every six to eight weeks to definitely meet with the department head, or chief, or whoever it is, and then at that point, just report back and get updates, and so we can stay ahead of the curve if there's something big going on in town, like an $8 million safety building. So, for the police department, I have Counselor Dombrowski, I volunteered you, Ed, for the, welcome?
Thank you.
I volunteered you for the police department, and I know Chief Smith is very happy to have you on board, so I discussed it with him. Fire Department, Counselor Santos, I think this continuation is important.
Yeah.
I think that's really critical, so we kept with that. And Social Services, it went from Ed to Counselor, maybe, but hopefully that's okay.
Sure.
If anyone says no, then I'm in trouble, because then I don't have any second backup here. Counselor Donaco, made a change to community planning and building, so it's a little more specific, and Paul is very active downtown with a lot of things anyway, I think it's a good, it's a good feed for Paul to be involved. But again, I changed it from downtown planning, building, to community planning and building, I think that's more apropos. And Tony, since I think your daughter's in high school now, we made you a school department liaison.
You did?
That's a joke on that part, but it's just, I think it's a good fit for you, Tony, since you went to school here, unlike myself, and are more involved, I think you'd fit in great with that. And last, but not least, Counselor Galvin, the gas and light department, but we also added the DPW, since we wanted you to have, we wanted you to have more opportunity to learn more things faster, and when you figure out what's going on both those departments, let me know. Let me know, report back earlier, just tell me. So if you don't mind double duty, I won't say who suggested that, but it was a very important person in town suggested you'd be great at both. You can talk to me afterwards on that.
That's fine.
So, since Ed is here now, let's bounce back to the beginning, and thank you for your patience, I know the presentations and public participation was supposed to be earlier, so. So, let's see, why don't we go to, what if we just did the...
Okay.
Okay, so for public participation, again, thank you for showing up and coming to talk to us tonight. Just remind you of some of the rules for here, it's not back and forth participation, it's really just you telling us, telling the town what's on your mind, approximately three minutes if it's needed, I can give you a little more, but we try to stick with three minutes, and again, don't look for answers, at least today, from us. So first, we have Robert Mitchell, if you want to join us, just state your name and address, and Steve's clocking you now, I can see him moving, it's the only time he uses the phone during the meeting.
It's about three minutes.
Okay. And just get a name and address.
Robert Mitchell, 6 Fulton Street.
Welcome, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. As the presenter of the petition for Article 8, I feel obligated to address town council. To start off, I am very supportive of our first responders, however, it is the specifics of this construction effort that I am opposed to. Far from convinced, this facility needs $8 million now, which just in 2004 had a $2 million renovation. Adding another 20-year bond to the one that we still have not finished paying off will cost something north of $10,000 a week until the year 2040. This facility will be on a small footprint that has no room, if ever needed, for future expansion. In 2002, the police and fire building began construction, and both departments had to evacuate the premises for two years. The old Montrose School was renovated as a temporary police facility. Surely, if in 2002, the police had to evacuate for their $2 million renovation, how could they possibly remain for an $8 million complete rebuild? Also, town officials moved to sell off the Montrose School on the presumption that there would be no future requirement for a temporary police facility. Many observers questioned if the temporary facility requirement has been addressed candidly by town officials. So I asked town council, has the expense to choose, renovate, and maintain another temporary police facility been included in this $8 million article, or will you ask the taxpayers for more funds? Or to paraphrase Yogi Berra, is it déjà vu all over again? For these reasons and more, I felt compelled to petition town council to hold this townwide vote. President Franklin Delano Roosevelt once said, "Democracy cannot succeed unless those who express their choice are prepared to choose wisely." The real safeguard of democracy, therefore, is education. We have highly educated voters in this Boston suburb, regardless of whether they voted yes or no on Article 8, or even attended town meeting, voters are looking for more information from town officials on this subject, and also other looming capital expenses, not limited to the high school, DPW building, and vocational school. In conclusion, I do hope town officials seize this opportunity to inform and converse with the voters. I do hope that voters engage in this issue, enjoy a healthy debate, and choose to vote no to $8 million. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Robert.
Exactly.
Very good. I think he's, he must have practiced that once.
He did.
Very good, thank you very much. Next, we have Margaret. Margaret, what's your last name?
It's Schimmick.
Okay, Schimmick, okay, no offense to the handwriting, I just say, that's probably yours, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, welcome. Again, like I told Robert, just, thank you for coming, just, we have a limitation of three minutes, and we can't go back and forth and discuss things right now with you, okay? Thank you for coming on.
My name's Margaret Schimmick, some of you probably know me as Meg, and I am here to represent my business, which is The Bread Shop, located at 411 Main Street, and I would like to address the council regarding this year's farmers market. Basically, we participated for the first time last year in the 2017 Wakefield Farmers' Market, and upon approval of our participation last year, we were asked by the market manager to agree to a stipulation that forbid us from selling some of our regular menu items, such as cookies, granola, and coffee. Given the ultimatum, obviously, we agreed to abide by this condition as long as we were at least able to kind of participate in the market, and I think that the market manager set this agreement in place to prevent saturation of certain products and competition between the vendors. And while we followed these guidelines throughout the entire market season, it became very discouraging and frustrating to see other vendors' menus like evolve throughout this season, we started seeing similar items to ours, such as blueberry scones and French baguettes, being sold by our competition later in the season. And as previously mentioned to some of you council members, our participation in this farmers market is so imperative to the success of our business, and we feel fortunate to be allowed to participate. As an artisan bakery that experiences a slow season from January to May, bakeries like mine rely solely on these farmers markets to kind of carry us through and remain a financially sustainable business, and this especially goes for the Wakefield Farmers' Market. It basically allows businesses to come in and compete with us in the town that we regularly do business. And with that being said, we do not feel that it's fair to place these conditions on our intended items for sale, and we participated in two other markets last year, another one this year, and have otherwise never been told that we can't sell something. Our business and the products that we make every day fit all of the guidelines that are put in place by this market. In addition, we had perfect attendance at every market last year, rain or shine, and followed all the rules and regulations that were put in place. We feel that selling our best products, and also offering a reasonable assortment, includes selling such items as cookies and granola. Because your approval of this farmers market may also allow the market manager to, again, put this regulation on us, we feel it's necessary to address our concerns to you. By placing a stipulation on one vendor, but otherwise allowing other vendors to compete for business, is an unfair business practice, and it does not leave much room for future progression of this Wakefield Farmers' Market. Thank you for your time.
Very good, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next, last but not least, is Rada. I know how to spell your name too, before I even looked at it, right?
Alex Stein.
Yes. Welcome, again, you know the rules, just three minutes.
Thank you, great.
Thanks very much.
I did not coordinate that with you, but I'm here actually to talk about farmers market.
Okay.
Not necessarily to advocate for my business, but as I did some research 10 years ago, farmers market used to ask the local businesses first to participate, and later on, they stopped. Further research that I have done, farmers market are born and on a national level, they are open-air markets that should be placed in a heart of spending district, however, and to bolster local economy and sustainability. Now, that our farmers market is not placed at a spending local business district, it's outside our business district, it is imperative that our local businesses have a priority. After all, what I understand, the farmers market is the latest provider for them free of charge, gratuitity of taxpayer of Wakeville, and also recently, they were allowed and have electricity put by the town, whatever they needed, again, gratuitity of the town. Now, the local businesses in Wakefield, if we want to have a vibrant downtown, we should be really, we should be really paying attention to local businesses, just like Bread Shop, and even have a table there at all time for local businesses to present brochures, to perhaps attend the table, to market our downtown, to boost some way that people would be attending our downtown. Also, you may want to consider at some point in the future, some other towns that do not have a market, farmers markets in a district where it's closer to downtown, they have a small, little fruit stand, little, small, little markets on a different day, closer to, as close as possible to downtown. All that is designed to bring people together and help our local economy and our local businesses. It is absolutely not acceptable and not very kind for our local businesses, that I know them so well, that to say, "You can't do this, you can't do that," and in fact, the town has provided free land for the local market, we need to be reminded, why is that farmers market there to begin with? What is the real purpose? What are the goals there? And then go from there. I, definitely, I am not the artisan, and I'm not like advocating for me, but there's so many great local businesses, and why not have a, even, like me or another shop, anything, a small table to be presented at the farmers market, to support us and to promote our downtown, and promote how great local businesses we have, along with the local farmers and local, you know, people that produce their food and product that are offered at the market, farmers market. So I really thank you, and I need you to consider that seriously before you write any agreement, and before you allow this to happen. Furthermore, I have no, you know, anything to gain here, but I just, what is wrong is wrong, and I need to raise that and make sure that you all are aware of that. Thank you.
Thanks, Rada. Okay, next, going back, getting back to order again here, the, okay, the farmers market contract is up for renewal, and can I get a motion on that? Just to...
Do you want to bring Wendy over?
Oh, Wendy, do you want to, do you want to come up?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Wendy, that was, behind Susan, I didn't see you there. Sorry.
Talk to her.
Susan's so tall. Thanks, Wendy. Can you state your full name and address?
Wendy Ann Dennis, 12 Armory Street, Wakefield, I'm a townie.
Oh, you're a townie, okay. Well, at least now I know that. Okay, so, do we need a motion to go into conversation now, just, okay. So discussion, comments on the renewal of the farmers market contract, Wendy's here, so it makes it handy. Anyone have any comments? Wendy, would you like to say first?
Could I correct some inaccurate information that was put out just before now? Because it's inaccurate, some of it's inaccurate, not intended to, I'm sure, but...
See, is that...
It's...
Do they have rebuttal too, in that?
No, they don't.
Okay, it's just one?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not rebuttal, it's just...
According to council, yes, sounds acceptable, yes, go ahead.
Yes. I have, for years, offered a space for free at the market for vendors, you know, for merchants to be there, be there for the full four hours, you know, just be the, you know, follow the rules of the market, and to whoever's, whatever business person is, you know, taking the lead and being there that day, they can highlight their business, and have coupons, just as Rada mentioned, you still here? And have coupons, I've done this over and over again, and life's busy, and Saturday's a tough day, so that hasn't happened. The farmers market does not have the staffing, paid or volunteer staff, to do this, we just don't, you know, we can't provide an attendant, setting it all up, and setting all these things up, we just can't. They're perfectly welcome, if that merchant group wants to do that, I've offered year after year, it's in the documentation that you all got. So that's happened. When the Wakefield Initiative started, they asked to use the Upper Common. Phyllis tried, God bless her soul, I miss her, brought it up again two years ago, I think it was, and she got immense backlash, as she should have, from veterans in town, that they didn't feel it was appropriate to have the farmers market on the veterans' memorial common. So, that probably wouldn't be the best location to try Rada's interesting idea about having, you know, another alternative thing going on, if everyone thinks the town can support such a thing. I do, the market does pay for electricity, that electricity is also used by the people that sell Christmas trees for the YMCA, so that is not there just for the farmers market. I have told Pormian's Coffee that they can't do breakfast sandwiches and breakfast foods, I told them, because that's just not, we don't have, we don't have the smell of prepared foods floating through against, you know, some meat with a vegetarian, that just wouldn't, you know, we want to keep it comfortable for everybody, so we have no prepared meat, you know, foods and things like that. Also, a Swiss baker asked to bring iced coffee, bottled iced coffee to sell, and I said, "You know what? That's going to conflict with Pormian's Coffee." So, that was, and as far as what other bakers there that have been there since the beginning, that's their prerogative, as far as I'm concerned, because they've been there. And I think that covers those things, so there were just some inaccuracies there. So...
Okay. Thank you, Wendy. Comments from the town council? Ed?
So, I feel like I'm going to pull a tug here. I appreciate what Rod and some of my fellow councils will say with regard to putting Wakefield businesses first. I don't actually have that argument. I think if a Wakefield business fits the criteria, I would love to see that Wakefield business get a nod, but I don't think the farmers market's purpose is to put Wakefield businesses first. I was a big proponent of having the farmers market downtown, pushed back against Phyllis a little bit, because I think actually it would bring more people to look at our memorials, those lovely memorials as well, I understand people, but, you know, I don't want to treat them like cemetery stones, I think that would be lovely to have people walking around and seeing it, and I agree with you, with what Rada had said, and Wendy, I think you also, several years ago, you know, that idea of having people to access downtown is great, but that ship may have passed. So, where I'm getting pulled is, I'm a little, I don't know if annoyed's the right word, I don't want to go to war over granola and cookies. The Bread Shop is a great business, and to me, it fits 100% what the farmers market wants to do. And I think, you know, when I go to the market, I buy tomatoes from this stall, but then when I go to the next farm, I might buy some more tomatoes, I see different, I see jams in different markets, I see competing goods, that doesn't prevent me from going around and picking maybe the French bread over here, but yet the scone over here. So, I just don't, I don't know why we're arguing about whether granola and cookies can be sold, that I think would enhance both the market and certainly support one of our, one of our only artisan businesses, I would argue, in Wakefield, and there might be others that are being hidden, but I don't know if many other businesses in Wakefield would qualify. But I just, I, and I don't want to micromanage a nonprofit, some of my colleagues might want to micromanage it a little more, they'll be more strongly on that, but I feel like I was supportive of the market last year, because the process in my mind wasn't followed, and precedent is important. I wish we could have compromised before, but I feel like now the process is followed, and I'm uncomfortable with putting a lid on something that seems so silly, for us to be involved in, this should be a three-minute vote. That's, those are my comments.
Excellent comments. Ed?
I have a number of questions and comments. We had spoken at length about this last year, at the last request for approval, as you might recall, and I thought that one of the takeaways that was made relatively clear was that if we're going to be using town land, then there has to be some recognition and some priority allowed for preferential treatment to town businesses that fit within the intention of the farmers market. So, I'm not suggesting that this becomes a flea market, or that the nature of the market changes, but I do have great difficulty when I, and I appreciate the packet of materials you submitted, I look, for example, at the application, it says, "Note, application will only be accepted by vendors already invited by the market manager." And I don't know why we would have an arrangement such that the market manager is kind of self-selecting who is going to be invited to participate. If we have businesses within Wakefield specifically, that meet a general criteria for a farmers market, I think those businesses should be made aware that there's an application process, should be invited to apply, and all things being equal, I think they should be given priority over those similar businesses that are outside of our town, because we're providing the land, the town people are providing the land and the resources.
Can I address that?
Sure.
People are welcome to email me and see if it's going to work, and if it's, if they're, and then, I don't want people going through the whole process of filling out the application and finding out they don't fit the criteria, for example.
Well, I would say the...
So that is, that is why that has, because I had that happen last year, I had two vendors that forwarded to all these people that don't even fit, or there was like, you know, "How many jewelry makers do you want?", you know, that kind of thing, and I had people applying that there was no way that they either qualified, or that it was going to make sense for them to apply, so that's why it says that on there.
I think that's different, though, because if you want to have some sort of a pre-screen, if you want to expel out, this is what the criteria is, so if you're interested applicants...
Right, but this is just sent to the, these are sent to the invited vendors, I'm asking them not to forward that link.
I understand, but...
So that's, that's how I do it.
What I'm saying is, though, it's by invite only, and that seems to me to be not in keeping with the spirit of an open process whereby anyone who is interested and who understands what the criteria is, believes they meet the criteria, can submit, because when I read this, I say, "Okay, well, if I've been one of the chosen, then I have the opportunity to apply and then have the market manager make the decision." That doesn't feel right to me.
No, no, that's not how it works. If you're invited, you're in, so you get the link.
I understand the invite part, what I'm saying, though, is there are a lot of folks that haven't been invited, and I think there are a lot of businesses...
They haven't asked.
If I may?
I'm sorry, no, they haven't asked.
Okay.
And those, there have some that have asked, and if they haven't fit, I email, I try to explain, blah, 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 but in general, you know, if they email me, if they don't email me, how do I know that they want to do that?
Because I don't think that there's, I don't think the onus should be on a potential business to have to seek you out to ask if they can be invited, I think instead, any farmers market should publicize, "Hey, we're looking for anyone interested who fits the criteria to apply, and it will make us our selections." And so I think that the process, to me, feels very backwards in that if, the one person's been preordained to determine who is to be invited, then those folks are in the market. Why would you not instead, though, just have a notice, go out, you know, months in advance, "This year's Wakefield Farmers' Market is looking for those interested in applying, here's the criteria to be met, if you believe you meet the criteria, submit an application that'll then be reviewed by a market manager, committee, or whomever." It feels quite elitist, the way that it's currently set up.
Well, it actually creates a lot more work for a very underpaid market manager.
Well, I think that that's probably a separate issue, I mean, as I understand it, then you're talking about restructuring the way that this, the market is run, that perhaps that's part of... the way that this, the market is run, that perhaps that's part of it. We have a lot of, we have volunteers who come before us all the time looking for opportunities. If there are volunteers that could help out to go through that process, I don't think it's going to be all that onus of a process.
You know what? I have to say something right now. I'm really not feeling well. I have a four minutes, four and a half minute statement that I'm going to read, and then you can vote as you please. I'm really not feeling well, so I want to get home before I'm not able to drive home, okay? Here goes. It won't take under five minutes, and then I'm going to leave, and you can vote as you choose. The bread shop just put artisan bread and pastries on their application, and that is all I have heard from them, or from anyone on this board. Since the application, albeit submitted online, is the equivalent of a signed contract, I would think that they should have come to me with any additional requests versus doing so through town council. It is not a professional way to act, nor do I think our town's government should be spending time on such negotiations that will benefit just one business. I also know, I also only even know about this before this meeting because I asked Steve to reach out to see if there was going to have something come up. If I had not asked Steve, this would have been just like last year. All of a sudden, surprise, gotcha. So that was off script. So I asked Steve Mayo to reach out to the chair to see if there are any surprises in store for me this year. In response, Mr. May asked Steve to pass on some information. I don't know why he could not have just emailed me or called me directly.
Day job.
Since they opted to go through town council, I'm around weekends, and I have a day job, too. Since they opt to go through town, since they opted to go through town council about this, mind you, no one, I have not heard another word, except from getting the application from the bread shop. I've had no word about granola coffee. I didn't even hear about coffee till tonight. So never mind that they've already submitted their application. I'd like to point out that as a staff person of a nonprofit organization, I am supposed to be upholding a mission, and I do my best to do so. Part of that mission is ensuring that the market, which is a contained environment versus a free market playground, remains strong and vibrant. This happens when the vendors are happy. Please note that the vendors who pay to be at the market are my customers, but they all, you know, you want to keep your customers happy. But they also function as an employee would function, because if my vendors don't show up on time, or they don't come when the weather's bad, or otherwise fail the shoppers in the community, the market is hurt by that. There are many layers going on here, not to mention the nonprofit, coordinating nonprofits, musicians, organizing, you know, organizations offering special events, and all these that benefit from a well-run market. So I do my best to keep my vendors happy, as I am sure any of you would if you owned a retail or service business that had multiple customers and multiple employees. As mentioned above, I must also keep the shoppers happy, and part of that is ensuring that along with quality, you know, ensuring that there's a continuity of the vendors. Not only do shoppers enjoy specific products, they also build personal relationships with vendors. And shoppers can get really upset if a vendor does not show up as expected, or if they don't come back the next season. I suspect that I will hear from many disappointed shoppers when they learn that Mamadou's Artisan Bakery and the Popover Lady will not be at the market this year. Of course, this means that the bread shop will benefit. They will be able to sell a lot more artisan bread and pastries. So I have spoken with Emily of the Roasted Granola and Susan of Goodies Homemade to let them know that town council might vote to have the existence of the farmer's market contingent on my allowing the bread shop to sell granola and cookies along with their artisan breads and pastries. Both Emily and Susan indicated that this would have a strong potential to really hurt each of their businesses since they each offer only the one baked product at our market. If, depending upon town council's vote, the bread shop chooses, you know, if you vote to say, okay, we'll sign this if you agree to let the bread shop sell whatever. If you, you know, if you vote to make the existence of the market dependent on the bread shop being able to sell granola and cookies, and coffee, which would conflict with Pormian's Coffee, I will, of course, I will, of course, not want to jeopardize the existence of the market, so I'll go by the vote. In this case, it will be up to Lauren and Meg to decide whether or not they want to sell granolas and/or cookies at the market and thus risk seriously affecting the bottom line of these two woman-owned, non-storefront cottage industries, which is like the basis of the specialty items at most farmer's markets. I know that no matter what, this meeting will be followed by a repeat of mean-spirited comments about me on Facebook pages, and I will again receive hate emails and hate phone calls, hello, like I did after last year's signing town council meeting. But since I'm often told by just about every one of our vendors that ours is one of the best-run markets around, I must be doing something, right? And frankly, I'm just doing my job. I'm not trying to hurt a local business. I'm trying to keep the market there. Do you know how many people have farmer's market as a criteria when they, you know, look at a house in a town? It's a very much growing number. It's a good thing for the community. The nonprofits get all the visibility and this and that. And the good news is, well, I noticed, I did tell you, the Co-op Bank is now going to sponsor the Cooking Demo Food Farm Education Kent, and was told that they really like that, especially having the farm food education part there. And also, when I read, I got, as a business owner, Brett and Electric, and also Wakefield Farmer's Market, we're both members of the chamber, when I saw the email that John is, had come up with to do the flyer, that they're going to, the coupon flyer that they're going to hand out at people that sign the boat contracts to rent boats, I emailed him back and said, hey, that'd be great to offer those at the farmer's market, and I'd be happy to have them there. And I did express my concern. I was a little concerned at first with the Wakefield and Lynnfield Chamber merging about having them end up advertising Lynnfield businesses versus downtown businesses, Wakefield downtown. But I said, but I think, you know, since it is a merged chamber, as long as it wasn't like big franchises, like, I know there's not Macy's there, but, you know, stuff like that. And so I reached out, and that's going to happen. And maybe the Chamber would be able to host such a table with the coupons. I'd be happy to provide the space. That's not an issue. The issue is, I don't have the manpower or anything to do it, and I also don't think it's really appropriate to have items for sale there by non-market vendors, because those non-market, those market vendors pay, they're my customers, to have somebody come in and sell stuff that's going to mean people will spend less money with my vendors. That's the rationale between that. And as far as Wakefield businesses applying, nobody's asked. I heard, I did hear someone, one of my board members, the Climate Action Board meeting, who I do have to answer to, said that somebody had complained that I wouldn't let her sell something that she made. And I'm like, oh, well, that sounds really cool. Why doesn't she email me? And I checked, I did a search. She had never, ever contacted me about it. Yet she's complaining that I won't let her sell her stuff at the market. Hello? So, you know, I'm going to keep doing the best I can. We're going to get other people hired in, and eventually, hopefully, I'll just be doing the food farm education for the market, providing the market stays stable, which it probably will. It has a good foundation, but you know what? I'm done, I'm done with.
Oh, before you leave, before you leave, I know you're not feeling well, but, well, I'll say it on the camera anyway. So everyone loves the farmer's market, period. I mean, there's not one person here, Tom's even here. Everyone loves the farmer's market. It's a matter of Wendy and the farmer's market having some flexibility about businesses in town. We don't want to tell them how to run the farmer's market. God knows, none of us could do a good job. She's doing a great job. We told her a year ago, we're looking for some flexibility, and I think that's key. Anne made some great points. Ed made some great points. Tony, you didn't get a chance to make any points because.
I'm going to make my point.
So, so I will give him a chance to make his points in a second, and anyone else who wants to speak. But unfortunately, I know she wasn't feeling well, so I certainly wouldn't want to tie her up, but I think that communication, as Julie would say, is like critical for everything in life. And the few times I've spoken to Julie, she's brought it up a few times. Hopefully, she's not saying I don't communicate well. But I think it's important to let everyone say their piece. I think it was great that Meg was here tonight. Your name threw me on the piece of paper. I didn't know who that was. But, and Roda, thank you very much, unsolicited, not to take away from Robert, but focusing on the farmer's market. I think it's important that, like I said, one, we love the farmer's market. Two, we just look for flexibility, a little bit of flexibility from a year ago, and we didn't get any. And I understand her points of businesses, but that's really critical. The mic's not working?
Oh, it's not working.
Oh, bring it closer, okay. So that's really all I have to say. Just that, unfortunately, Wendy had to leave early, but I think that's important, that we say, you know, we love the farmer's markets, nothing to do with the overall business. It's just looking, the town council is in charge of the land in town, and to help the businesses, and this seems like a very easy, as Anne said, it shouldn't be going to war over the farmer's market over, what is it, granola and what? Cookies, so, I mean.
I mean, I feel that it's a lot more than cookies and granola.
Right, but I'm just saying, in what Wendy said. But anyway, let me have, sorry, Tony, go ahead, you say your piece, too.
Yeah, just pulled some information off the farmer's market website. They have four vendors selling produce. I have to think there's some overlap in lettuce and tomato there. They have four to five baked good vendors. I have to think there's some overlap there. That's not even including the pop, you know, the Popover Lady. There are two vendors selling jam. There are two to three vendors selling salsa. So there's a lot of overlap going on. And I think by allowing the farmer's markets, you know, regardless they are for a Wakefield or female-owned business, to allow them to sell coffee or granola, to me, it's just a no-brainer. It just offers people another selection, more variety. And the fact that they are a female-owned Wakefield business just makes it that much more rewarding to me to, you know, give them my okay to sell whatever they'd like there. Thank you, Meg.
Let's go to Julie first. She's the rookie in the corner.
I am the rookie. I wasn't here for the last debate, but I just wanted to say a few things somewhat as an outsider as well, because I am new. So I think, Peter, when you said that there wasn't any flexibility, I mean, the bread shop did get in and has spent a good year there selling, so I think it's a little tough. And honestly, I don't, I really don't want to get into cookies or how many produce or how many jams. And I really don't see this as just a farmer's market issue. We enter into many, many contracts in this town. Last, my first meeting last, two weeks ago, we entered into one with the boat vendor down at the lake. In fact, we entered into two. We entered into one with the Fourth of July Parade, and we essentially gave them the rights to hire vendors for the Fourth of July. We entered into, you know, multiple 5Ks and walks and the Americal. And I haven't seen in any of those contracts, albeit I'm a short timer, anything that requires local content. I'm all for, let's talk about local content in all of these contracts. Let's give all of these businesses and nonprofits, when they come to town, an opportunity to use local printers and local, you know, food trucks and not bring in outsiders. But I just don't see, you know, I don't see the point of micromanaging one particular business when we're not doing it with everyone else. So I'd rather have this turn into a long-term contract about local content and encouraging it across the board.
Any other comments, discussion?
No, I'll echo everything Julie said. I was here last year, and I respectfully disagree with you, Peter. I did, there was flexibility. The local shop that we all go to was included. This is, this is a nonprofit that manages it. And to ask about how she processes and how she gets groups and invites groups, that's not our job. That is not our job. That is why we have a manager. And the examples that Julie just came up with brilliantly are great. We just gave a contract to the voting group. We just gave a contract to the Fourth of July. We do not ask them about vendors. We do not ask them to prioritize Wakefield bands or Wakefield cars or Wakefield businesses. We do not do that. This is a Wakefield farmer's market. It has our name in it, but it is run by a nonprofit. She is the manager of the nonprofit. She works really hard to make it inclusive. We all enjoy it. I think this is a contract of, yes, they are using our land, just like a lot of other, every 5K, every weekend, there's a 5K there that uses our land. This is not, this is a situation between a vendor and a market manager, and it should stay that. It's not something that I feel like we should be getting involved in.
Fair enough. Paul? I'm not making you comment, I'm just making sure.
That's fine. I mean, there's no taking away what the farmer's market brings to the community. I mean, it established itself a long time ago. Many people look forward to it every year, and they go back to it religiously. As I talked to Peter today, and I said at the, a year ago, I would be fully against conditioning our approval on her being told what to do by this board. If you feel that it's necessary or imperative to have more flexibility in there, this is the document that you change. Put it into the contract that she has to sign with us. Don't make it as a condition, because I can't support an approval by myself only if she does what we tell her to do. If you want to make that a point, change the agreement. If you feel that Wakefield businesses should be allowed to go into the farmer's market, and these are the conditions on how they should go in, have her agree to it in the contract. I can't do it by conditional approval, though. So if we want to do it, let's start at the basis and go right to the agreement and start changing that, and then making it go from there. I think that's the fairest way of going here. I mean, again, I do agree with what Marine just said. You don't want to micromanage the people that you give the contracts to, okay? And we shouldn't, in a way. But do we want to give the businesses flexibility in what they do? Absolutely. We should give them that flexibility. But it's a give and take, okay? What document do you want to change? Their rules and regulations or the contract that you sign? So the chair has to sign this contract. Is he happy with signing this contract the way it is? That's great. But I'm going to pick up on one thing that Wendy said. If the agreement was already signed by the applicant, and it says here, do you agree to the following conditions? And it was checked that I agree, and they signed it, the case is closed, as far as I'm concerned. You agreed to it already. Now, after you put your name to a document, you want to change it? You're a lawyer. You'd jump all over that if that was in a court case. You signed an agreement. I know you'd be up there saying, you signed it. That's your signature. So how do you change it now? This is where you change it, in my opinion. And that's all I can say at this point. Change the contract that anyone has between this town council and any entity. And that's where you make the most logistical approach to it, in my opinion.
Okay, very good. Sure, sure.
First off, Paul, the application that was filled out did include these things. And in fact, they had to submit a whole menu of items to the Department of Health that was a part of this. So all of these items were already identified. So they did agree to abide by the contract. As far as the other examples, of course, there are plenty of events that we approve here. This is different in nature. We're talking about, I think it's like a span of 18 weeks. Every week, we are, in essence, having a pop-up shop, and multiple of them. We have a downtown less than a mile away that is competing with outside businesses that are coming in onto our land and selling products. We might as well wheel a truck up in front of the bread shop or in front of any other, you know, any other business that fits the criteria and have someone from the outside coming and selling their products in direct competition. It's, if we're talking about trying to be level and fair, then being level and fair is not having, you know, one hand tied behind the back of a local business so as to allow another business to be able to have free rein to sell the products that they want to sell. Last year was a bit of an anomaly, and we worked through that. And our approval last year was conditioned upon a local business that fit the criteria being allowed to participate in the market. That was our approval, and that's within, well within our authority. If I heard that anyone said with respect to a 5K or any other non-for-profit event that Wakefield businesses or Wakefield residents were in any way being excluded or in any way compromised, then I would have that same discussion before this board here. But we're talking about, in essence, creating a shopping village for the entirety of June until October. And that shopping village directly competes with our local businesses. And our local businesses, we have a perfect, one, and again, this is not about the bread shop. It's about it being a local business that has played by the rules. They have, they had perfect attendance. They are following the rules, and they saw even over the course of the season, those around them, suddenly, things that were being sold are, you know, that were not being sold by others were then being sold in direct competition. This market was started off with two farms, and now it's up to seven. So for, and I can tell you, I've been to this market plenty of times. It's a great idea, and it's a great market. But you can get a quart of strawberries at just about any one of those farms, and I'm confident that they all sell out each time. In the write-up that we have from Ms. Dennis, she says that the part of this mission, the mission of the Wakefield Climate Action Project, which is actually, I guess, the 501(c)(3) involved, shopping locally fall within its mission statement. She then, again, on their website, it says, and shopping locally fall within its mission statement. In her write-up to us, it says, in part, the business model is more like that of a shopping mall, a grocery store, or other contained venue. I have yet to go to a shopping mall where I can only buy a pair of jeans from just one retailer. I have yet to go to a grocery store without having a variety of 18 different yogurts to buy if I want to. That's what we're talking about here. It is within our authority, and I do not believe it's micromanaging, to suggest that a local business not only be, you know, allowed to participate as like any other business would, but also, let's not jeopardize or compromise a local business by having competitors come in, be able to sell things that this local business is renowned for and can't. Granola is one example. Granola is different at the bread shop than it's going to be from the granola lady and from another vendor. I don't think having two people selling granola is going to put anyone out of business, quite frankly. I mean, let's be logical here. This is a town, this is town land. It's a town business. We're not doing it to the exclusion of anyone. We're not saying that another business can't be here. We're saying that if it's a Wakefield business, there should be some priority. I thought there was a general consensus last year that, you know, a focus on that. So, you hear about flexibility. There wasn't flexibility. We said last year, "It's conditioned upon the bread shop being able to participate." So, that wasn't flexibility. That was, you know, following what we had, you know, determined as a board. I think it's important and I respect the work that Ms. Dennis has done. She's been committed for many years. I respect the fact that the farmer's market has a real place here in our community and adds to it. No one's disputing the merits of it. But when you look at this, this is now the second year that we're having these issues and I don't think it's necessary or appropriate. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah.
To me, it's not about giving Wakefield businesses preference. The bread shop fits this perfectly. So, they should be allowed. This is, I almost just said a swear on television. I'm so glad I caught myself. This is North Korea and the US. There is a personal animosity between these two. Is everyone not sharp enough to see that? That's, that's, that's an issue. And I agree with Paul in the sense that I do not want to pick apart this contract. Want to sign the contract. The farmer's market is great. I don't go to the farmer's market to look for Wakefield produce. I get my farms and I go to farmland during the week at some point. I mean, I don't think people go to a farmer's market to shop for Wakefield goods. The bread shop's awesome. If they go there, then they can go downtown and realize they can buy more things. But, you know, I think the contract should go forward, but, you know, détente or a meeting or something has to be done to alleviate this issue. It's the only, it seems like it's the only business that's butting heads. And I feel badly that Wendy ran out. I understand she wasn't feeling good, but she's done so much good, but there's just something that's not allowing this to be easily successful. You know, to Ed's point, I might like the granola, the granola lady better than the bread shop, but I might like their baguettes better. So, you know, I don't want to put conditions on what they can sell, however. That, to me, doesn't feel right. You know, my naive hope would be that we sign the contract and then just make an effort to work to figure out what's behind the caustic nature of this so everyone can be as successful as they can be.
Well, it sounds like we need to have a liaison now with the farmer's market.
So, Peter, if I may.
Yes, please.
So, when I mentioned the contract.
Right.
I mentioned only to the fact that if anyone says that, like we did last year, conditioned our approval, take that condition and put it into the contract. Eliminate, eliminate the condition. Okay? And just make it in simple wording, a change in the contract that you will allow businesses that fit the criteria to come in and do their business there. Okay? And without conditions or whatever way you want to word it. But something should be done in the agreement. And then we sign it, she signs it, and now it moves forward. I think that's what needs to be done. Okay? Instead of us saying, "I'm going to condition my approval." We should, you want to, I think, if I'm not right, Tom, don't we run into an issue by saying we're going to condition someone's approval on doing what we tell them to do?
No, I don't see the problem here at all. I pointed out the last sentence of paragraph one, which says, "The town reserves the right to revise and amend the rules at any time and to impose such other rules and regulations with respect to the use of the premises as the town may in its sole discretion deem appropriate. The licensee acknowledges the right of the town to do so." I don't, I don't think we should be fighting over how many angels can be on the head of this pin. You can put a local content requirement in this contract, but pursuant to the sentence I just read, you could also just pass a vote saying that it is your intent that this is a new rule or regulation or condition that you want them to live with. You have that right.
Tom, in your work with other communities, do they have farmer's markets there as well?
No, I haven't, I haven't seen one.
Okay. I just didn't know if there was other contracts that had local contact and how content and how it was worded because I would be very careful. I would not want to shove a Wakefield business onto the farmer's market that doesn't fit, like has to fit the criteria. And if there is room at the market, like if the inn is full, this should.
Vape shop will be.
Yes. We have four smoke shops in town that sell tobacco, like product there, right? I don't want to, I don't want to be telling the manager what she sells. And that's a local business. We should be supporting our businesses locally, right? We have four tobacco stores in our town.
But they don't fit within the criteria of a farmer's market.
And even the most general definitions, that's the distinction. I agree with you. If it were something different, yes. And I also think it's important to point out so everyone knows who's watching, that we had tried to work this out before tonight. We had raised this issue. You heard about Mr. Mayo. Several of us had gone to Mr. Mayo independently and Mr. Mayo had been liaisoned working in his capacity because that's what Mr. Mayo reports to this body. And he had been asked to work with Ms. Dennis to get this resolved beforehand. That was obviously unsuccessful. But it's not like this was something that just came up out of the blue. So, there had been discussion.
So, it did come out of the blue to me. I did not know about this. I don't know if Julie knew about it before today.
I started doing something yesterday, but I don't know any of the details. I kept asking for information.
It was not brought up to us.
I, Maureen, I said several of the members had gone to Mr. Mayo. Mr. Mayo had communicated to Ms. Dennis. So, she was suggesting that this was, you know, something that she was surprised to have heard and no one had approached her on it. And she was criticizing Mr. Chairman for not reaching out directly. Mr. Chairman reached out to Mr. Mayo and Mr. Mayo was the point of contact as he should be. So, that was how the process works. So, I don't want to give this, this impression that it was anything but that. So, we had tried to address this before this evening. Obviously unsuccessfully.
So, honestly, just to jump in, this is a lot of time on the farmer's market on this issue. This is really, this is a lot of time. I don't think we should spend any more time on it. So, all great points, just a matter of kind of moving along here. What do we, what do we want to do? Do we have any motions? Do we have any, not more commentary. I think we've heard, I think we've heard enough to make a decision unless someone really is adamant about another 45 minutes on cookies and dough. No offense to the granola bread shop. But.
I'd like to make a motion in that we allow approval of the farmer's market provided that the bread shop is allowed to sell the full complement of their products and that, and provided that the farmer's market meets with Mr. Mayo and Town Council to talk about ways going forward that we can better achieve our mutual objectives of a successful market with Wakefield businesses given priority when appropriate, when they fit the criteria.
It'd be nice if Wendy was still here because it seems like it's such a simple thing to put you two together like Anna mentioned before and just work it out like in the middle here.
So, why don't we just do a motion to postpone, we table the vote till our next meeting.
I'm thinking that's the best way to go.
Anna or someone actually asks as a liaison and works on it and then we table the vote for our next meeting.
I, I agree unless you're.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, here's the thing. Here's the thing. Honestly, we all have great points and we all have, I think, really strong convictions on what we believe in. And I don't think we're going to get anywhere. And I don't want to end up with a 4-3 and it ends up being.
This is a problem. Start dates June 16th.
We have a timing issue here too.
Yes, true too. So, that's the farmer's market first day?
Nah.
Okay.
Yes.
But our next meeting is June 1st.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
This is the first time.
Okay, hold on, hold on. Time wise, Paul, let me just ask Steve and Tom, do we, there's not a time issue, right? Because the next meeting we have is.
June 11th.
The 11th, okay.
I don't know, I don't know how that says for the vendors. That, that's.
That's a vendor thing now?
My end is concerned. I think that we have to.
Vendors might pull out if there's not a contract.
A firm contract in place, okay.
Yes.
If a vendor pulls out because we allow the shop to sell granola.
No, 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 no. No, no, no.
No, just the contract's not signed. Yeah, that's. Okay. Go ahead, Paul.
I don't mind what Ed's saying. I want to remove any comment about the bread shop into the contract. I want you to be more generalized and say, "Wakefield businesses. Forget the bread shop."
It's fine.
Okay? Because now it's more palatable to me.
Any Wakefield businesses currently participating in the 2018 farmer's market season shall be allowed to sell their full complement of products that meet the criteria of the farmer's market.
Whatever the wording may be, that's.
So, I amend my motion to be that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, just one more footnote. Now, Steve, you want to, do you want to just share that comment?
I took Wendy's comments to say that she had contacted the other two, I'll call them competing vendors, I don't know who they were, and that, hey, if they worked it out, they worked it out. But she said, if the board said that, she would continue on. I think that's what she said. She would still continue on with the market if the board conditioned what was happening with the discussion with the bread shop. That's how I took her words tonight.
I mean, what we could do, and I'm not doing this again next year.
No.
I am not. It's ridiculous and it feels like fifth grade to me that it has to be a discussion before that the businesses come in and under the contract, they sell what they want to do. I agree with you, Steve. I think Wendy did say that, wasn't happy about saying it, but I think she said it.
Right.
But I still do think there's, you know, if Kim Jong-un and, you need to be, I don't, that's up to you.
No, no, we shouldn't, we shouldn't, sorry. Yes, I made. Okay. All right. So, we're really just down to two positions, correct? We're down to.
No, I think Steve's.
Oh, Steve's third, that's true.
No, it's good.
Go ahead, Steve.
I just wanted to know, I know Ed made a motion. I just want to make sure you have that correct.
I'm just going to amend the motion then based upon what Paul had said. And I suggest that we, for the 2018 season, allow any Wakefield businesses that are participating in the farmer's market to sell the full complement of their product so long as it fits within the criteria as described.
Okay, so, protocol wise, so, that's the motion. Okay, so, do we, do we have a second for that?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay. Second and then discussion. Thank you, Paul.
That are currently participating? Because I'm worried about every vape shop in town pulling out a permit or application.
No, no, no.
Right.
Or anything else detrimental.
Right, no, 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 no.
I think they can't.
Okay.
As I understand, the businesses are locked in for this season. So, I'm referring only to this season. I think a broader discussion needs to be had about how we can address this issue going forward.
Right.
In a more constructive way. But I'm just, it's triage basically. I'm looking for, how do we do it for this year, for 2018?
Right.
And I think that's the way that we resolve it for this year. And then we'll have to do a close more than after that.
Right, okay. And we do need to get the contract signed today, so.
Yes.
Julie.
Is it open for discussion?
Yes.
So, is there a way, because I heard what Wendy said as well, is there a way instead of being specific as to they are allowed to sell their full complement? Because again, I don't think we should be dictating what they can sell. Just to say, I think, I, Mr. Mullen, reading that last clause, it seems to me like this is a very wide open. We can change rules at any time. I mean, can we just approve it in that the two parties will get together and come to a mutual agreement? And we don't care what that is. I don't care what that is. Is there some way to do that?
Well, it would be easier if both parties were here. That's the problem. You're going to still possibly run into the same situation. Then Ian and I don't want to do this next year. I mean, this is definitely, and not during the summer either. We don't want to be doing this.
And I can say the two parties, there is a fundamental breakdown here. That's why they had come to, the business had come to the town because of its concern. And so, I think that we're in a position to move it forward for this year. And I think there has to be, I also don't understand why, I mean, I'm looking at these, there are like, you know, welcome letters to the market dated in April, but this is before as for approval, you know, on the eve of June, less than, what? About two weeks away. I mean, why isn't this being, you know, why, it feels like the cart before the horse. Why isn't the approval being gotten in, say, in January or February and then you move forward with it? Because now there's a lot of commitments to a lot of vendors and for all those vendors, they're relying upon this now. But it feels really inappropriate that we're kind of now boxed in. I don't, it seems to be.
Maybe you can make that earlier in the year next year. We'll plug it in for January.
Like January.
Yeah, just, just.
It's when we get it.
Yeah.
Yeah. It makes no sense. It's already, people, the letters are welcome and, you know, you've been approved and all the rest to a market that hasn't even been approved by us yet. It makes no sense. And it's a great thing. No one is disputing how much they love the market.
Right. No, that's why I wanted to make it perfectly clear. And Steve also does a lot of phone calls for me, so that's to back up my, my not caring about the farmer's market is not part of the discussion. I love the farmer's market. I just want a few things adjusted, but.
On the discussion?
Yes.
I'm not a fan of full complement because I don't know if I want the bread shop to be able to sell coffee, if there's a coffee vendor there. I just, I don't want to, because I think the farmer's market can control the content, is that correct? Of what each business sells. So, I'm a little uncomfortable making the full complement.
I'll say that they, I believe every business selling food had to have listed out in, to the Department of Health, all the items that were there. So, I would say whatever items were identified to the Department of Health.
Department of Health with the farmer's market.
Right.
Then that's fine if they've identified.
So, they've, as a part of the application process, they had a separate listing of all the items to be approved.
Just to bring power to the sentence, because we didn't see that component. So, all we're seeing is three documents in front of us right now.
Right.
I mean, and I've gone over them a half a dozen times. And the one that we have to concentrate on is the one where she lists everything that they can do and what they can't do. It has to fall into that criteria.
Right, that's the criteria, but that doesn't, that doesn't speak to this particular business. There's nothing, we don't have anything about this particular business. This particular business has expressed to us because of the condition placed upon them, which apparently is carrying forward. I'm simply saying that whatever the Wakefield business has submitted to the Department of Health as the items they've identified, those be allowed to be sold at the farmer's market on town land, paid by taxpayer dollars.
And I hope the business would be smart and not like put everything out as a, this is what I can do, Ms. Dennis. Like I hope there's some give and take.
But if you notice, nothing from what this business has said, this business has not tried to limit what anyone else is selling. They in fact said there were blueberry scones that popped up halfway through the season. They didn't come to us and complain about that, but that obviously was something that they didn't go into. I know that Ms. Dennis had indicated in an article to the item recently that there's a farm now that's going to be having baked goods being sold for the first time. I don't know what those involve or what they entail. There might be some crossover with what our local business here is doing. But that, I mean, that's the nature of competition.
Okay, so, just to jump in, so, we have a, we have a motion on the floor.
So, can I have just one?
Okay, just one more. Yeah, we're going to.
I'm the advocate on this right now.
Okay, go ahead.
And then we can vote.
Please, yeah.
On your point though, so, let's just say Wendy is the manager of this. She sets out the form. I fill out the form and I submit it. You're saying that if, if I agreed to what the manager says, that if I go to the Board of Health and just because I list everything that I want to sell at the Board of Health, it overrules the manager?
No.
Okay. I just want to make sure I didn't hear incorrectly.
The submission is basically, it's a concurrent submission. So, there's, the left hand knows what the right is doing, Paul.
The manager lets, you're the business, you tell the manager after the manager says, "Yeah, you're in." You already agreed to what you're bringing into that, to that location.
You identify it, yes.
You identify it. So, now, if you listed on the Board of Health form that you're putting eight more items, you're out of your contract.
You do it at the same time.
That's right. Okay.
That's how, that's how the process works. You submit, it's a concurrent simultaneous.
I don't want somebody to try to come through the back door on it.
This might.
And I should also point out that if, to your point, and to Mr. Mullen's point, if at any point we determine that there's something that, that it was running afoul of what our intentions are, we have the authority to step in, at any point between now and October.
Okay, yeah, just...
Raise the concern if someone has one.
We have a lot of people here tonight, and people on TV are yawning now, so I wanna make sure we're keeping them awake. Ian's very funny tonight. And actually, Ian didn't sleep well last night, 'cause she was up all night. Do you wanna tell the people what you've been doing? Okay.
Senior prom, so that's why I'm giddy, I apologize.
Okay, so go back to sleep now. So now, we have a motion on the floor. At this point, I don't think I'm being rude to anyone here at the TC to just say, let's, we have a motion, we have a second for Ed's motion. If we could have a vote on that, that would be great. So all in favor of Ed's motion that I think Sherri took down, and Tom and Steve are okay with, all in favor of Ed's motion going forward?
Can we read what it is? I lost track of where we were on it.
You weren't paying attention to Ed?
No, I was paying attention. From compliment to less compliment, so...
It doesn't like that when you don't pay attention. No, I'm kidding. So, I don't know, Ed, if you can do it again, or Sherri, do you can read it back? I'm not sure whoever's, whoever's better.
Sherri.
I got the Sherri.
Sherri?
No, I go ahead.
Sorry.
All right, so the amended motion is then that the Town Council allows this contract to be signed, conditioned upon any Wakefield businesses that have, that are participating in the 2018 market, being able to sell any products they've identified to the Department of Health. Period.
Period, okay.
Tom, is that fine, Tom, then?
No. I'm hoping that the Department of Health, that matches with the contract that goes to the manager. If it doesn't, that concerns me.
That a little bit, making sure that managers, what the manager's told and what the Board of Health is told, has to match.
Yes. Number, it's number 29 on their application.
Okay.
Right.
Good.
Good, okay.
And if not, we can address that one.
So, all in favor of Ed's motion with the extra on the end there?
Yeah, not half.
Aye.
Okay, aye. All opposed? Okay, so we have six to one. Okay, thank you. All right. Motion carries, thank you very much. And also, just throwing it out to make, just, if you can, please get together with Wendy when she's feeling better, and just try to work it out, 'cause it's really, we don't wanna, we hate getting put in this kinda position where it's really, we're all for the businesses in town, and the farmer's market's great, but just, there's been a lot of tension, I think, between the two groups. And I think that you would be doing yourself a big favor if you can somehow get a hold of Wendy and just sit down with her. Bring Steve as an arbitrator, if he needs someone, Steve is great. But I would say, you meet at the Town Hall. Steve, Steve's office is always open. Seriously, if you can do it, 'cause I think, your business, we wanna help, but we also wanna keep Wendy as happy as we can. Thank you very much for coming in there.
Thank you all.
Okay. There actually is some more on the agenda tonight.
C should be easy for you.
C should be easy, okay. Was it Aronap? Aronap Cellars Liquor License for Wakefield's Farmer's Market. Can I have a motion on that?
Some.
Second.
And discussion, comments on Aronap Cellars Liquor License for Wakefield's Farmer's Market.
I just wanna be sure from Tom, there's no liability concern. Do you have Tom? It's like, it was pretty complete from looking at things.
No, I think we've already provided for insurance.
Yeah, okay. All in favor of the Aronap Cellars Liquor License for Wakefield Farmer's Market? Opposed? Okay, all in favor, unanimous. I feel like we should stand up and get a breather. Okay, so moving along, we bounced around a little bit, we already did the appointments, finished those, repeated. Okay, so, presentation action items. So centralized voting. It's a motion to use any two wardens out of the seven appointed wardens as set forth in MGL CH 54 S 24.
I'll make the motion, but prior to the motion, I'd like to have Mr. Mayo give us a little update on what that is.
Absolutely. Because there is centralized voting now, and pursuant to the Secretary of State's office, when we had seven precincts all around, you needed a separate warden for each precinct, which did increase the cost of the elections. Where it is centralized, we can actually handle this with two wardens total, and then have, you know, what's the other clerks?
There has to be a clerk for every precinct.
And then two wardens. That can float around and take care of problems. So it is a cost saver part we looked at, and what we would like to do is to have the board sent to that, and allow the clerk will then appoint, you know, on different elections, who's the warden's gonna be.
I move that we use any two wardens that the clerk suggests out of the seven appointed wardens as set forth in MGL Chapter 54, Section 24.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you very much. Okay, so B on Section 5, we have set date as June 26, 2018, for the special election regarding Article 8 of the April 30, 2018 Annual Town Meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
And discussion, comments?
Can I ask a question on that?
Yes.
Just, just process-wise, do we always have to have elections on Tuesdays, or can they be on Saturdays for special elections?
They could be on any day that you choose.
Okay.
We have, we have had Saturdays in the past, or a Saturday in the past. In this case, this was the suggestion again of the Town Clerk, and I concur.
Okay, thank you.
Right, and just a little footnote on that, that was, we had 35 days, I believe, from the date everything was signed off on, so we didn't have a lot of time to pick a date.
Well, it's 35 days from today.
Oh, from today, okay, 35 from today.
Which would have put us into July 4th, which nobody really wants.
I thought it was, signatures were verified, okay, all right, today. Any other comments, questions?
When will absentee ballots be available? 'Cause I'm sure people will be getting out.
They are being printed now. As you speak, shortly.
Great. So I would urge everybody at home, if you're not sure if you're gonna be around, to just grab an absentee ballot when they are available.
And you can fill out the absentee ballot up until when?
Really up until the day before the election.
Thank you. Steve, what is this special election costing the town?
Probably anywhere between $12,000 and $15,000. Unavoidable in this case, Counselor.
One's month's interest.
Okay, so, June 26, do we have, do we vote on that?
We have voted, yeah.
We had a motion sent when you...
Right, so, all in favor of the June 26, 2018 special election regarding Article 8, the April 30, 2018 Annual Town Meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that's unanimous. Opposed? Anyone opposed? Next, intermunicipal agreement with Redding regarding the post program.
Yes, this, this, this will be a good one to talk about. I'll be very quick, okay?
No, take your time.
A few years ago, you know, looking at the spiraling cost of special education, and looking at the fact that any children requiring special education are part of the school system till they're 22 years old. So what happens is that these young people graduate, they certainly don't want to, they graduate 'cause they're 18. Certainly isn't fair to them and to their development that they are still in high school, they're still continuing in high school, so. And working with the School Department, and the School Department did a great job with this, I have to give Mike Pipeling and Kim Smith a lot of credit, decided to create a post program, or a purposeful opportunities for sexual transition program, meaning postgraduate. There's training that goes along, job training, what have you, what have you, to help these young people assimilate into the working world, and it's been very successful. We brought this in-house because to, if we were to have these students outplaced in a program, it probably would cost anywhere between $70,000 to $90,000 a year per student, okay? So it would be a big cost. We brought this in, so, we have really avoided, or the School Department has avoided, probably close to one point, exactly, probably close to a little over $2.4 million over the last three years by bringing this in-house. It's been a great program. We work it out with Redding. We actually refurbished an area right behind the fire department in Greenwood, and the Wakefield School Committee has approved this. I would ask that this board also approve it so we can keep it going. We give kids a great, or young people, I should say, a great leg up in getting into the world, and we avoid an awful lot of costs. So I think it's a win-win all around.
Any more comments, discussion?
I have one question, actually. Tom, it might be better directed at you. Paragraph 5, I know that Paragraph 4 talks about the cost-sharing piece and the quarterly basis and the ratios, not to exceed 70, not to go below 10, even if there's zero from one of the districts. Paragraph 5 talks about ongoing repairs and needs specifically related to the program shall be shared based on that cost-sharing formula, but it wasn't clear to me at what point we make that determination, so if it's...
I think it would be, if we had any ongoing repairs now, we would make that on the same that they were in that year.
But would it be, say, for example, if it was done, like, say, in Q2, and the Q2 sharing was a 90-10 as compared to Q3, which might be like a 60-40, that obviously, you know, what's the date of demarcation? Is it when the repairs are completed, when they're ongoing, if they carried multiple? It was just unclear, because I wanna make sure that, it's a delta of 60% potentially, between a 70 and a 10 potentially, you know, worst case for us, and I wasn't sure if we could maybe just tighten it up a little bit.
Yeah, why don't we tighten that up, but I understand what you're saying, but my, my opinion would be during that period.
So we're completed during that period, so when it's invoiced, for example. So it might just be two sentences, but just making clear on that.
We can put that in there, that'd be fine.
Any other comments or considerations? So for the intermunicipal agreement with Redding regarding the post program, all in favor?
I agree with that change.
With that change, I'm sorry.
So, I'll motion for that, I guess.
Probably. On the motion.
Okay, so would that change?
Okay. So, again, the intermunicipal agreement with Redding regarding the post program with the addendum from Ed. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, hearing none. Kiosks, I love kiosks. Approvals and placements. I saw the map. The map is great. Town Council will be the final judge of that. Welcome. Can you just state your name and address again if you can?
You go first.
Bye, Mel Hader, President of Wakefield Main Streets.
Mark Faverman, Faverman Design.
Right, thank you, welcome.
Thank you. Are we having an hour to do this?
As much time as we spend on the farmer's market, so that was about 40 minutes. Please.
If I can get this working. Is that right?
We need some technical assistance.
No, I think, I think I got it.
There we go.
Okay. Why don't you, Bob, why don't you explain, this part, I got it, I got it. Yes, sir, thank you. Bob, why don't you explain the project, the background of the project?
So, we've, we've been working with Town, Town Council for probably the last, part of the program, to break it down, part of the program, Kiosk Program is through our patroncy program, which is, we raise money through community, community funding. This was brought about last summer. We raised overall about $58,000 to put towards different town projects. The kiosk project initially was gonna be three kiosks placed in and around town, the downtown area, within the Main Street District. We got some additional funding from the state, which allowed us to purchase a fourth kiosk, an informational kiosk, which will be digital, and we've worked with Town officials to find the right placements for that. So, the kiosks themselves will be maps, directional, working with the wayfinding program that the town will be implementing soon, directing not only our own community members, but from people from out of town to different businesses throughout the downtown area. The lake, for instance, we talked about many, many times, how many people from out of town actually walk the lake, who, quite honestly, whether they pass the farmer's market or whatever, they usually stop there, get in their car, and go home. So the grand, really the program is to get people from the lake downtown into our businesses down there, so that they can support those businesses. So we've worked closely with Mr. Faverman to come up with what we think are some great designs that will help them bring people from the lake to our community downtown.
So, when we began this exercise, we tried to figure out what would make something unique that's uniquely Wakefield, and also what would help underscore the notion of destination. That Wakefield is a destination, that Wakefield is a place that you wanna visit. So, we looked around, and we saw, is this working now? Yes. I'll go back a little bit. Here we go. Hello. There we go. So this is a symbol of the town that everybody seems to agree about. It is, the bandstand, it has a certain unique quality to it. The lake is very unique, but this next to the lake also just reinforces a sense of place. This is a huge placemaking element. So we came up with a kiosk design, a two-sided one that would look like this. Notice the person next to it is looking at their phone, and the reason why is that there's a QR code on the kiosk, 'cause they can access the town website, and there could be all kinds of information. So, we're looking at something that's 21st century, as well as something that represents the 20th century, and maybe even the 19th. But it has a certain feeling of placemaking, a feeling of uniqueness, a feeling of Wakefield is a destination. This is a three or four-sided one. This will be a digital one, and the, one of the sides will have a screen on it, and the screen will be done through either Wi-Fi or another method, and it will be changeable, so that if the school is having a play, if there's an Italian festival, or an Irish event, all these things can be put up and changed, and from the Town Hall. So it'll be really a wonderful element. These are the beginning of the wayfinding elements that we're looking at, and I just wanted to show you that the red and the black legs will correspond, so that it'll be part of the overall wayfinding that we're doing in parallel way. So, we looked at several locations, and so we show it here at Main and Water Streets. This one is Main and Albion. And this is at the Veterans Field. And this is the one that will be near the lake.
Is that the digital one?
Why, this is a digital one, yes. And you see, it's on a concrete pad as well. Here's the map that we already got complimented on. That was very nice, thank you. And this is, I have to say, the shortest slideshow I have given in months. You, Town Councilors, are the commissioners of the streets and the commissioners of sidewalks. So it is up to you to approve this, these locations. These will be done, hopefully, either by the end of June or middle of July, if you approve it. And so, we're on a fast track, and I appreciate any insight or any questions that you have.
Paul? Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm willing to support the kiosk as well as the locations, because they have stayed consistent to a degree from a year and a half ago when we first started hearing about all of this presentation. At that point in time, it was that we, our concern was, we wanted to bring in Mr. Faverman into the picture in order for us to make sure that what we're approving through our authority fits what we're going to try to present in the future. I think that they've done that. I don't think that we should have to go into any more great detail with it. I think a lot of input and comments have been made, both through the branding meeting that a few of us have involved it, and then through separate meetings between Main Streets and Mr. Faverman over the project in itself. So I encourage my fellow councilors to also embrace this as something good for the town, and support this with a yea vote.
Turn it in.
So, comment and question. I love the digital idea. They popped up around Boston, and they're, so they're very sharp-looking, and the colors are brilliant, and they really pull you in, so I love that idea. My only question, and not second-guessing or micromanaging, it's, is there any kiosk that is on, looking, standing on Main Street, looking towards the lake? I saw one on the left. Is there one on the right-hand side that in case we've got walkers that way bringing down? Do you know what I mean?
Like, on the brother's side, you mean?
On the brother's side, but further, I mean, if, if, one of the goal is to drag those people from the lake, I just didn't know.
There will be wayfinding elements eventually, so that will be part of the hierarchy of elements.
Got it, okay, so they're not different than a kiosk, but then we might, okay.
Kiosks are a bigger item.
Perfect, okay, thank you. They look great.
Tony first, and I'll get you.
Great presentation. I love the design of the kiosk. It really incorporates, you know, the town, the carousel, you know, a lot of us, you know, I had my wedding picture, you know, there. Any thoughts about something up by safety city, Old American Mutual property? Because a lot of races and walks, that is their start and end area. Any thoughts about putting something?
I'm sorry.
Commerce Farms.
Commerce.
Commerce.
Well, I think, I think we tried to identify high-traffic areas, the highest-traffic areas we could. Working with, we worked with Rick Stinson as well. Working with, we work with Rick Stinson as well. We have to kind of stay with this power, and where there's no lines that we have to dig up, or that they have to dig up. The train station was something that we looked at a lot for a long, long time, and it just didn't, it just couldn't come to fruition. But, so there are opportunities maybe down the road, where we could, or he could do something with wayfinding or something like that, but we're pretty open, but I think...
Is it, any opportunity, have mobile ones, or?
Just funny what you mean by mobile.
A mobile kiosk, that you can move from location to location?
Like the street-side ones that the DPW uses?
Something like that. Yeah. I'm just throwing it out there.
I don't think that's what you want, I think we want permanent locations. We, however, on some of the directional signage, we could have that connected to, with QR codes, that connected to mobile phones, and you could get information off of some other pieces, as well as the kiosk down the road. So we're thinking, the phrase is not multimodal, because that deals with transportation, but multi-communications, and how we can do this in the best possible way, that will answer a lot of questions.
Thank you.
Julie, I'm sorry.
So I just have a couple of questions. You said you worked with Mr. Stinson, so I assume from a traffic standpoint, they won't block, or will that be reviewed by our traffic committee? Like the one at the, where the bus stops are? I don't know, if there's a lot of cars, can they take a right and a C around it?
Right, I'm sure that's something when Rick...
Okay. I would just say, that's what I...
It was reviewed rather...
Perfect. My other question is, other than the digital one, are they permanent displays, or are they changed?
They're changeable.
They're changeable.
Yes.
And I bring this up because we already have three kiosks around the lake, and I spend a lot of time around the lake. And I don't know, actually, I don't know who is responsible for the maintenance of those, but they're not kept up, the information in them, I mean, they look nice, but the information in them is not kept up to date. And in fact, it's redundant. The exact same thing is on one side, that's on the other side. And so I just throw it out, taking nothing away from your wonderful presentation, that, you know, we should also remember things that we already have, and maybe there's ways to use the reverse side to put some of these wonderful maps or designs.
Maintenance is a key, if you hear.
Absolutely, and I just don't want that to lose sight. We already have some things that I have some questionable, not physical maintenance, but informational maintenance.
Yes.
And I just don't want to lose sight of that.
Yes, good, good.
Go on. Julie, I think the presentation was great as well. Thank you very much for coming in. The only thing I thought about was, just, I know you've looked at a lot of locations already, but the top of the lake, I call the top, across from like Gingerbread, where they have the friends of Lake Quantipaw, the bricks and the flag, you know, that seems like the start, when you're coming around the corner.
But again, we're going to be able to have some wayfinding there.
Okay.
And this element might be a directional piece, that has some presence.
Because that has kind of a starting...
And we'll have to come before you, when we get that all organized, and get you through that as well.
Okay, I'm just saying, that's kind of a starting point, like Tony said, a lot of the races up there in that area.
Absolutely.
But it's just, since the old Lonnie Island's gone, it just seems like the start of the town, in a very good way now, to have something there, or something more. But, that's it, great for me.
For a nominal fee, the town can buy as many kiosks as it wants. Main Streets is already supplying us with four.
Nice.
If we find...
Okay, good to know.
I have a couple of things, branding and wayfinding, and Main Streets have all been talking about this, we've met for many months, Paul has, Steve has been involved as well. And I think the general consensus is, we want to go as digital as much as possible. I mean, that's the preference, there's obviously cost considerations with that. These are movable, so if we find that one location isn't working, they can be moved. And I think, to Mark's point too, you know, this is part of a more comprehensive, cohesive branding and wayfinding, so there's a lot of different elements, and I think Mark had flipped up the slide, you know, just briefly, but there's like six or seven, I think, different signs, variations of signs, from parking to like directing downtown and the like, so they all work together, but when you're thinking about, oh, kiosk here, kiosk there, there will be something in all those places you're thinking about. It won't just be a kiosk in each of those places, because that would be too much.
And to add to what you're saying, we thought about historical information on the kiosk, so maybe on either the, one of the sides at the bottom would be some historical images of Wakefield, and some explanation of what they are, and so it will be a teaching tool, as well as an informational tool, so.
And with digital too, I'll say that, the idea of, you know, town hall or wherever, being able to change out, you know, every ten minutes if you want to, you know, information and the like, that's a real nice feature that we don't currently have, and it's a real, it'll give a real sense of community, and a great way to push out information that we don't currently have available to us.
I guess, going back to that, so who is going to maintain that? Is that Main Streets, since, or are you giving them to the town to maintain?
Actually, it's going to be the town.
Okay, so that's, so there's a centralized maintenance. And the other thing is, just as we talk about all these signs, I guess the one thing that does come to mind is not only vehicle traffic, but making sure there's ways for wheelchairs to pass, and that it doesn't get in the way of pedestrians.
That's all being considered.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, Rick Stinson's great.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to call it out.
Any other comments, thoughts? Okay.
You can give the motion to accept them, and accept the placements.
Okay, can we have a motion to accept the kiosks, approval of placements? Second, and, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, none heard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the short presentation, too. Okay. Next is a request to accept and expend a gift, or gifts to the library in the amount of one thousand six hundred and eight, I'm sorry, one thousand sixty-eight dollars from various donor with thanks.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, matter is not anticipated by the chairman within forty-eight hours of meeting. Let's start with Julie, since she's still new. Still new. Oh, you started last week? Okay, I'm sorry, Maureen, you want to start first? Because Julie's getting offended.
Sure. So, three things, just to bring up. One, we talked here, we set the April twenty-sixth vote. Steve, I'm looking at you, if...
June twenty-sixth.
June twenty-sixth. Ooh, I wrote April two.
That's why you were thinking of April twenty-sixth.
Wow, June twenty-sixth. So June twenty-sixth, we set the vote, it had to do with Article Eight that we discussed at town meeting. There is video from that, I'm hoping that we can work on our website and have a page that has the warrant, and the video from our two-hour debate of that, and the mailer that's going to go out to everyone, but just have one place that we can share, and then maybe even a frequently asked questions about it, yeah, the plans that I saw in the library, but it would be great to get that up ASAP, that we can share with everyone in one site, just a suggestion to help people out that didn't get to make the town meeting. Second, Memorial Day, speaking on that, Memorial Day events were this weekend in town, there were some great events. There was a great event that Peter, actually Chair, Councilor May spoke at the Public Safety Building, and made some really good comments and arguments about the vote that we'll be taking on June twenty-sixth, and so I'm encouraging Councilor May to share those, because they were really moving. And then the last point is, as we work on becoming a more welcoming and accepting town, I just wanted to remind everyone that June first is the start of Pride Month, so happy Pride Month to everyone.
Maureen, thanks very much. Mr. Janakow.
Thank you, Mr. May. I'm going to be real quick, I just want to have a couple of reminders, and I'm going to start off with the main reminder on this. I just want to bring it to this group's attention, that the A-frame approval that we agreed to expires this Saturday. So, what I may recommend to the chair, with his approval of course, is that we work with the organizing groups, and to bring back a report and set of permanent guidelines for the A-frame, so that we're not continuing to do this every six months to eight, to a year. Have something permanent in place, and have it for our meeting in July. I put down the ninth, but I think we meet July, we only meet once in July?
Once in July.
And my date is that off the top, please?
It is July sixteenth.
So I would like to have something back to this board for a vote on the sixteenth, and in the interim, if the board wishes to at least temporarily try it, take away the one day a week use, and let them use it seven days a week, and see what happens. See if there's comments, yea or nay on the fact. But I think we discussed that early on, that if we didn't have any problems with the Saturdays, that we try to expand it and see what happens with the expansion. I think there's only fifty, Steve, right now?
Fifty, round fifty A-frames.
Round fifty A-frames, so, a try-up period, a pilot period in the interim, and then we extend it until at least our next meeting in July, our meeting in July, and then come back with a report, but that you'd have to put a group, a small group together, which I don't mind sitting on.
Sure, okay. And I love the A-frames, I know Ian always loved the A-frames downtown Boston, so I'm big on seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. I don't care about, that's, I just love them. The businesses love them too, I think, but. Julie, you ready?
Sure.
You nervous?
No.
I'm sorry, you weren't done yet, I'm sorry.
Well, two small things. Hot John Breakfast is at the Crystal Community Club on June fifth, Tuesday at seven AM. That's one reminder, and also the second reminder is the Fire-Fire Sunday Memorial Service is at eight-thirty AM at Lakeside Cemetery on Sunday, June tenth. So now, that's all.
That was very important, I'm sorry I took away your time.
That's all right.
Julie, please.
So I just wanted to point out that the plastic bag reduction bylaw is going into place in July, at least for the larger vendors, the larger square space. And I know that at town meeting when that was discussed, there was some discussion about kind of a town plan to put that into place, and collaborate with local organizations, so I would just ask that we start to think about that. And I know there has been some work done in the chamber.
Every business has been hand-delivered, a reminder.
Right, and I think there's probably some awareness to actually shoppers, I think I'm talking more about customers. But in any case, I just wanted to bring that up. And I guess on a related environmental, since I'm on that arc, yesterday the DPW distributed three-hundred-and-thirty-five rain barrels. It was an amazing day, and kudos to Claire, our stormwater manager, and to Mr. Stinson and his amazing team who stayed out, and it was quite a production, but most of them were distributed, and I calculate that that means, even if they just fill up once during the year, that saves twenty thousand gallons from going in quickly into our stormwater. So I'm really proud of Wakefield for that, and for the DPW to lead it, so I'm happy to be their liaison. And then I guess, just the third thing, since I'm probably the most recent person to have read the newly released open meeting laws, because I just had to sign off on the regulatory, and I know it came up at a meeting prior to my participation here, but I really think we should look at the remote participation. I think it expands kind of inclusivity, and people who can serve, maybe people who are homebound or sick. I know, you know, one of your colleagues spoke a lot about how it really helps with hearings and ZBA, and I just don't want it to fall off the agenda, so I would bring that up as well.
Good point. Ed?
This past Sunday, I had the opportunity to run, the Run to Remember in Boston, which honors fallen first responders, and I wanted to actually congratulate one of Wakefield's own. Officer Matt Sarette actually finished within the top three of first responders, so good for him. He is a beast of a runner, and, but he just, he cleaned my clock. But congratulations to him on that, and to all the officers that did compete and run. It was, I was proud to be able to run in the same race as them, and for such a good cause. That's all I have, thank you.
I have a few things. I know Julie, myself, Tony, and Paul.
And Steve.
And Steve. But you guys got the early shift. So we all participated in the post-senior prom get-together at Dave and Buster's, and that's probably why I'm less articulate than I hope to be, because I haven't slept. The cat naps didn't quite work, so I'm running on not much energy, but it was awesome. So myself and Julie had like the two AM to five-thirty AM shift at Dave and Buster's. And the kids seemed happy, a little tired at that time, but they seemed happy. And one of the added benefits, Katherine Dingres was there, who was amazing, Kim Smith and Kim Hartman, and Ann...
Miller.
Miller. Chelsea Mitchell. Miller, were really the driving force behind it, and I give them huge props for that. They said that high school administration and teachers came back to this group and said, the level of drama and anxiety for the last several weeks was so down compared to last year, when everyone was trying to figure out whose post-prom house they were invited to, and if you weren't in that group. And they said it was an added nice bonus, that kids really seemed to come together. So we kept our kids safe, it doesn't mean no one's going to, you know, go someplace, but the post-prom time is a very high-risk time, so I'm so proud of our town, school department and everyone, and especially the women that were the driving force behind this, to do that. Congratulations to our graduates, a bunch of great kids. Congratulations to Maureen, who's just coming off of fasting for how many days that I can't even imagine.
Day sixteen.
Day sixteen, congratulations. And I also, with regard to the Public Safety Building, this, we took a very united voice at our meetings, and certainly at town meeting, to support the public safety for a lot of different reasons, and well-stated reasons, and I hope maybe that we can do a united voice to support that, whether it is a letter to the editor explaining why we supported it as a town, we're not telling people how to vote, but we did it for the Galvin, when I was on the board, that we explained to the Galvin, we explained in a letter to the editor why we thought this was such an important vote. And I do think, Peter, it's something, you know, if the, we can talk about it, it doesn't have to be, well, it's June twenty-sixth, yeah, so it does have to be kind of soon. We have the meeting, when's our next meeting?
June eleventh.
June eleventh, okay. So maybe, you know, at that point, we can have a discussion about, do we want to put something in the paper? I know individually I probably will anyways, but as a voice, a united voice, I think it makes sense. So, that's all I have.
Excellent. Thanks for making it in today, too.
I know, I've been in discussions with Chief Smith, and I will be submitting my own letter to the paper, but I don't know if many members of this town council knows, I was about to say the board. There is a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar line item in the state budget, and is currently in conference committee, that money is going to be used, if it gets passed, for the reconstruction of the floor at the Americal Civic Center. It may be, I hate to say another letter, but it might be a letter to the governor, and copying all our state officials to approve that one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars, because I don't know how many, the Civic Center lately, that floor is badly needed. Also, it's talked about bringing business or bringing people downtown that are in for events, so a week ago, excuse me, last Saturday, there was a giant soccer tournament at the Galvin Middle School, both fields. I got wind of it about Tuesday, I reached out to Steve, the Chamber of Commerce, and Dan McGrath. So John Smolinski, hopefully I'm stating his name correctly, reached out to the founders or the driving force behind the soccer tourney, sent him an email with the links of how to get to the Galvin Middle School, where to eat in Wakefield, and things to do in Wakefield. So apparently that email got blasted out to every person in that soccer tournament. So for the first time in history, I think, we took an event where basically everybody at that event was not from Wakefield, and we drove them downtown to the places to eat. Steve said he saw a bunch of soccer jerseys down at the public kitchen that night, I reached out to a couple of other local restaurants, and they saw an increase in business as well. That's all I have.
Thank you, Tony. So, a couple of things, a lot of good conversations tonight, a lot of great points on both sides, especially during the farmer's market. Thank you very much for everybody to put their energies into reading all about the farmer's market contract ahead of time. So, in my normal journeys around town, like everyone else, I've been noticing something that I want to bring up. It's still illegal to smoke marijuana on the streets of any place in Massachusetts, but in Wakefield, this seems to be, it happens quite a bit now, where people, some folks sit on benches and smoke for hours in front of stores, and I don't think there's any fines for that, and I think that...
There are.
Are there fines?
We have a bylaw that forbids it.
Okay, so, do we have, do you know what the fines are by any chance? I didn't see it, okay.
I, no, I can't, no.
Okay, that's fine, so maybe just an enforcement at this stage, it just seems like businesses in general are upset... in general are upset. And it's not like someone just lights up and walks by. People are camping out and the camping's got to stop. And so it's the enforcement part then. If we, it's great. I didn't know we had the fines.
It's treated the same way as the open container.
Right. Same as the liquor. Right. But I don't think anyone, I guess what the folks, businesses or anyone else, citizens, not so much citizen arrests, but just to, to, to call the police, let them know. Because it, it doesn't do anything for our image. It doesn't do anything for sales in the businesses, especially if people see this and they just, you know, want to get out of there. So I, I just have seen it a number of times, even in front of the Mark Smoke Shop. So granted, you're, you're going in to buy cigars and then you're coming out and everyone's already smoking out there, which is fine, except what they're smoking, they can't do legally. So that's been bugging me a lot lately. So that's off my shoulders. So Maureen, thank you very much for bringing that up. I, we have a big vote coming up again, as Robert Mitchell mentioned earlier. And the board, the prior board, the current town council have been discussing this quite, quite a lot lately, over the last six months to a year. But I will, I'll, I'll make it brief. But I do, I like the fact that Maureen liked something I said, which is really important to me. So Sunday morning, we had the police Memorial Day service and it was, it was great. But I was preaching to the choir. It was easy because everyone was in blue. And there was a lot of great people there that have done a lot of great things for our town. And these days policing is not what it used to be. I think Ann and everyone here will contest to that. Chief Smith will tell you 14 years ago when he became chief, it was a totally different world. 14 years later, it's, it's very dangerous just putting on your uniform every day. So let me just read just a couple, if you can bear with me, a couple paragraphs here from excerpts from my speech Maureen liked. So, "We believe we have always had and now have currently one of the best, if not the best, police department in the state and country. When we call 911, we are getting the best professional first responders possible." Period. The past, this past winter, the Finance Committee led by Dan Sherman passed a plan 15 to zero to fund an $8 million tax levy to give the police an additional space and to fix all the problems with current, with current safety building. Dennis said, "This will not cost the taxpayers one dime," that was a quote from the town meeting, "in new taxes because of the funding coming through the tax levy." The town council agreed and voted seven to zero to authorize this much-needed infrastructure change, changes. The town meeting approved of the desperately needed changes by a wide margin. This approach was well-thought-out and researched by experts in the safety and building fields. Now there are 204 signatures that have been submitted to our town clerk to prevent this structural, these structural changes to our safety building. Via the town charter, these, these folks have a right to call for another vote, another town vote. The town vote will be held on Tuesday, June 26th, that we just agreed to tonight. I know I am preaching to the choir when I was talking to the police, but I think everyone in town needs to know, a vote for the safety building on June 26th is a vote for town safety first, the town and the current police department. We really, in my opinion and the town council's opinion, the 15 to zero vote from the Finance Committee, who don't take things lightly, especially Dan Sherman. If it doesn't cost the town a dime, he doesn't say that lightly. So what I want to do is with the town council, I want to put something together that we can put out to the public, just facts, whether it's website or papers or whether we all sign it or not. But I think we need to put the facts out because despite the 204 signatures and other folks maybe beyond that will, that will want to vote against it. I just want people to, to vote. I think Robert said tonight, we have a very smart town. We have a very, very smart group of people. I just want them to, to have it fact straight before they take a vote and didn't know what they were voting for, whether it's for or against. But I know, I'm for it, the town council's for it. 15 to zero is unusual for the Finance Committee to vote anything. Ed can contest to that, I think, being on the, the Finance Committee for five years. So that's it for me. But Maureen, thanks very much for the comment. The shout out was good and I think it's really important for the town to get this straight. And we don't have much time. So. Any other comments?
Steve.
So, so I'm sorry. Steve and Tom, I didn't see you there, Tom.
I think you anticipated everything, Mr. Trump.
Did I? Thank you.
I'll be, I'll be very brief.
Yes, please.
Three quick things. Number, number one is we will be revisiting in June, probably on June 20th. We're going to have a, another community meeting at the Herd School. We talked about that. We held off on that because, hey, it may have been needed for swing space. There is no swing space needed in the public safety reconstruction. That point was made quite clear at town meeting. So I kind of don't understand why there's any question about that. So that is not the case. Number one. Number two, the Digital Content and Communications Manager is the new name for the, the, my new name, I should say, for the job that will be posted in the middle of June. And that'll be available on our town website. So keep a look at that. And one thing that we will certainly do that we did four or five years ago, when we upgraded the website the first time, is that we will then, once this position is filled, we will have a, a committee of citizens to talk about what they want on the website, how they want it to work, make sure that it is mobile friendly and all of those things. So that's something that we will be doing as we go forward. We did it a few years ago. We want one step. Now we want to go to the next step and make that better. And the third item is I got a very, very lovely email from the grandparent of a young girl who was in the prom the other night and how, you know, her granddaughter walked around the, the Fetchings Memorial Park and how wonderful she thought the whole grounds looked and they did. So I do want to thank our DPW department, Rick Stinson, Dennis Fazio. It really was special. Looks great. Looked great all the time, but I think that the citizens do notice that. So I do want to give that shout out.
That's for a better night.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah. Tom, Steve, sorry I didn't.
That's okay.
Plug you in right away. But in, in that regard, Sherri, anything on your end?
All set.
Okay. Excellent. Well, I just don't want to leave anyone else since I missed these two. So thank you very much for all your input tonight. I think we need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ian, I didn't hear you.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn. Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you for staying up so late and coming in today.